Good evening, like to call to Winterfield Town Council Vision Setting Agenda Meeting Part Two to Water. Tonight, invocation will be given by Dr. Randy Harrell and the Blessed.
If you are between your hearts and minds, our Heavenly Father, Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the people of the town of Winterfield, but we thank you for being able to meet once again in unity and you provide us with wisdom. Heavenly Father, we ask for a special prayer for Councilwoman Hawkins and her family as she is not with us today, wherever she may be. Thank you for this food, let it be a nourishing strength to our body and also a bread of life to our soul as we continue to be servants unto you. Lord, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. If you could all stand, I pledge my allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Madam Manager, if you could just do a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. I would start on the other end of the table this evening with Councilwoman Harrell.
Present.
Councilwoman Smith.
Present.
Mayor Protim Mooy.
Present.
Mayor Hines.
Present.
And Councilwoman Robertson.
Present.
Okay, Mayor, and of course, Councilwoman Hawkins is not with us this evening, so everyone else is present and accounted for.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to welcome everyone back to our vision setting part two and people that are watching us tonight. Hopefully, we can get this all set and be ready to roll. Next up is the approval of the agenda. I make a motion that we accept the agenda.
Second.
Okay, have a motion made by Mayor Protim Mooy, second by Councilwoman Smith. Any questions? If none, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Next up is we're going to take a break for dinner. We're going to take a 30-minute break and we'll be back. We're going to take a break for dinner. All right.
I'd like to bring us back into session. Again, thank you, Don, for being the CEO for us tonight. I really appreciate that. What we get ready to do now is discuss our vision setting. And so I'd just like to bring attention to, we looked at one to three years. We've kind of laid out a roadmap for one to three. And tonight, trying to look at somewhere between five and seven years for all projects that we would like to see happen. And one of the biggest things that we have right now, and I think that we're all in tune to keep discussing is the multipurpose center. And I think that should be a vision that we should set out for five to seven years. So because of the costs and everything that's going on right now in this present time and with our federal government, and they maybe their lack of funding. And so we've got to kind of be cautious, make sure that we dot every i, cross every t, and look for every source of revenue we can get. Because a project like this probably going to run somewhere in about 20 million. So it's take everything we can get to, you know, get this building done. And so we're going to have some type of resources and look under every rock that we can find this money. Then the second thing, and I'm just throwing these things out, y'all might have other things too. The other thing is to look at land on the west side of Winterfield. Maybe purchasing some land on the west side for recreation use and other uses. Because as we all know, Greenwood was steady on that way as well. And we just want to make sure that we're getting ducks in a row. And need to kind of be looking that way ourselves as the town grows west of Winterfield. We already seen the town going to stop south. And I think we've done a good job trying to secure land there. So, and then today, I was on a meeting with NLC because we're a member of small cities. And small cities consist of cities of 50,000 or less. And then our meeting today, we talked about partnerships. And small city makes up 60% of the US. And so we had people from Alaska on that. And we was just talking about different things. And one of the three things that they talked about goes for small cities. And what we're going to be talking with the legislators on the hill about is economic development, uplifting small communities. And so, you know, something to think about. So, you know, we're all trying to find that piece of pie. And so, do y'all have anything that y'all like to see as far as a vision for the town of Winterfield? That y'all could think of that we need to be kind of focused on, you know, five to seven years down the road in your country?
What happened to the Drenish project?
I'm here now, I've asked Anthony to discuss his long-range priorities for our enterprise funds. And I'm sure that's part of his presentation here.
Okay.
No, I don't.
No, I disagree with the land acquisition and looking in different places. We saw recently somebody was outside development plans. Mr. Moore had asked or brought up last week, you know, maybe in the library. I know that we've done some patches and maybe it's not quite priority, but in a long range, it's going to need some work in the future. Not a risk that I'll go through when you guys are...
For real?
Yes, I do agree with the multi, you know, the multipurpose building and the current land on the west side of Winterfield. But I would like us to kind of go back and just look at monies that was allocated for the multipurpose building, just to kind of see where we at, where we are, and then figure out where we need to go. So there again, I know we're talking about five to seven years, but within that one to three-year plan, it is very crucial that we have a strategic plan. So that's one of the things. And then also identifying ways that we can increase the revenue for our town, which is one of the things that is up here. I think that should be in that five to seven-year plan as well. Oh, in succession plan, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, you know, that during the time we will be making plans for multipurpose. I do want us to, now Drenish project has really been hanging around a long time. And I'd like to see us get that done, you know, because I think that would benefit everybody in time.
All right. I think we're all on the right foot. I appreciate everybody's input. That's what we should be doing, you know, giving out input. And then we're going to turn it over to Terry and the staff to give us some more, I hope, of other priorities.
So I think within that five to seven-year range coming up, I hope we will also look at completion of our prior training ground, which is currently located at the operations center, behind the operations center. I'm going to leave enterprise fund projects to Anthony, but we will have a future need that may extend beyond seven years. I'm not sure of the timeframe yet for substations, both fire and police. We definitely have building needs, got some short-term building needs. We've got some longer-term building needs that are going to cost a fair amount of money. And that's on our current facilities. And then, these are not in any particular order. So because what I'm getting ready to say is last is certainly not least. And we had discussion with some staff today, but there's a continuing conversation about expansion of our workforce, the need to grow. We're already behind in the plan, trying to juggle bringing on additional employees. And it's really across the organization to handle growth. Is it, has already come and continues to come. It's got to balance that with the major capital needs we have and projects we have. It'll be a challenge, but that's definitely one that we need to try to start off with. And again, we have some very large projects in the enterprise fund. I'll turn it over to the HEM to kind of ease you over.
This is fairly good.
So sure, Wayne, there you go. So tonight, we talked about the enterprise funds. We'll start with the electric fund. The, some of the major things that we've really got to do, and this is committed and long-range. We need to complete an electric system assessment. We have some of this currently underway with our agreement engineering firm, making a valuation of where our current system stands. However, you know, we need to kind of apply that to our future growth area. And I'll show you that in a moment. That, once we have that done, then that will help us take the next step. And that's build a new capital improvement program. In many, many years, we had a capital improvement program for our electric fund. So we feel like it's a vital step to making sure that we know how to strategically plan and advance our system to meet the demand of the elements coming. In that, we know without a doubt that first land for a substation, you talked about our other land for recreation, our other operation facility. Looking at our growth area, we are going to have to identify some land for a substation on the south end. Then I expect to expand our service area into our agreed territory. So we have a territory agreement. Just like with the water, we have a similar agreement for electric. It is not the same area, it is unique in another cell, it's on the territory. So that will need to be looked at. And then, one other advancement, AMI metering, advanced metering infrastructure, basically allows us to be within the office without having to send a technician to the home. And so there's a lot of advantage of this. And that system hopefully will actually be incorporated into our water system to identify leaks or have better customer service. This type of technology will allow us to identify hazards a lot faster than we'll have to wait for the customer to receive a notification immediately. There's a whole system that goes into that type of infrastructure. And so we want to make sure where there is, we're in a, AMI technology's been out for a while, but we're out of the area, what they call AMI 2.0 now. And they've changed a lot. So it may be that Winterfield was behind a little bit on implementing AMI, but it's actually probably going to work out to our benefit because of technology. Next, you'll see this is our electric service area. Green is kind of what the system was when we entered into the most recent contract agreement until this commission. But you see, we have two expanded areas, one to the east and one to the west. Kind of peak area, the area that we don't have a whole lot of infrastructure in. So that would be one of the areas that we're targeting to try to get as a development. Something along that we were prepared to service that area. Most of the stuff in the blue, I think we can get to without a lot of increased infrastructure costs. We'll move to the water fund. Y'all heard us talk about the water loop project. We actually have applications that we're trying to get funding for some of this at our home. Water tunnel construction, that's a major project that we need on the south end of town. Hopefully, we'll be able to locate that on the land of purchase. So getting access to that, getting water requirement, water pressure, and also, as I tell you, also making sure we maintain water quality while we work. We actually have an application that you can try and get funding for some of this at our home. Water tunnel construction, that's a major project that we need on the south end of town. Hopefully, we'll be able to locate that on the land at first. So getting access to that, getting water requirement, water pressure, and also, as I tell you, also making sure we maintain water quality while we work. Getting water underground, highway living, railroad, and providing better pressure on the west side of town. One thing about our water fund and our water service area is it's fairly small. We're west side of town, we have a lot of water corporation that services a lot of heat and they grow out that way. You know, in eastern and southern part of town, you have a lot of water corporation. So the interesting thing about our water utility is that I think we could probably build this out in the five to seven year period, focus on maintenance architect, called working out, or some sort of agreement with one of those two entities, who have probably maxed out, getting infrastructure into the area. And of course, there are old lines, and that would be the next thing, is like upgrading the lines that are that are in existence, that are aged, life dated and non. Have we learned from the previous audits, things fully appreciated. But all those things kind of went to a bad place. Moving on to the sewer. We're in desperate need of a struggle with an alcohol, we're in southeast side of town, which is where we sort of our development is right now. Potential service area that does not have the infrastructure in place. Bringing Chadman Street line replacement. That line, slip line, in the most recent slip line project, but there's still some issues with it. At this point, it would probably be better to replace that line, I think, to make it progress. Putting our long range plan, recognizing the regionalization of our sewer pump stations. Now, we had talked about more quality growth and managed growth, that we need to have any pressure in place. How that builds, replacing pump stations, that every unit building that comes on line doesn't have one of the pump stations, because they are a ton of work, a maintenance line, and far as that. Regionalizing may be expensive for plumbing, this would save tons of money on plumbing, because you don't have to have many resources tied up with it on a annual basis. And then, thanks for one of construction, for the regional pump station. So once we get it studied on, then starting to actually target water, then build a part. Stormwater fund. The first, plus the thing, two things that this fund is facing is the storm or AI claim that's currently in process and is supposed to be funded with a loan. And then, basically, they've gone out and looked at all the attributes in the town, so everything, rain, every pile. They've now looked at it, took inventory, made a determination of the conditions. Basically assessed, and that'll be coming back, which is a plan that sets in the future worst areas and such. But that will be wrapping up this year. Implementation of the MS four standards, this is a federal regulatory item that was pushed down and every towns above ten thousand are required to meet this standard. There's a whole plethora of standards that come along, it's not just one, but it's a whole, built in a maintenance program. Including information for existing public input that they're cutting off. Well-maintaining the federal, I mean, one example of what is required to maintain a storm range here. And looking at storm management, that's a nature factor. Place to make sure HOA is whether they're supposed to have new developments maintained in a condition that actually allows you to do the job. So all that's coming down, those regulations. We are currently waiting on information from the state to advance that. Documentation, representation, our higher cost, the management plan. Once we get that back, we'll convert that into a new ordinance, ordinance will hold forward.
Question. We have a little over ten thousand, it's time for those new regulations. What is the next change of regulation? How come now? Growth? I don't know any kind of number that changes that.
Yeah, I think it's once you reach ten thousand, over ten thousand, that your implementation of the part of the fire.
Probably, it does not change.
I mean, it's gonna be massive, though.
Maybe, it might be somewhere around a hundred thousand, like, in metropolitan area, they might have to do a tender. Unless the rules change.
There's a difference between, you know, that you have towns, up in my city.
The growth for a city, or a town, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm saying maybe once you get to a very large metropolitan area. So I'm not currently aware that much of the population will have that.
I think your question is how quick or wide the minimum standard, why if it gets fifty thousand, twenty thousand, it's not gonna be any options.
A hundred thousand, I just looked it up. So you've got what they call small MS four areas, which are a hundred thousand and less. And medium MS fours are a hundred thousand to two hundred forty nine thousand, nine hundred ninety nine. And then, large MS fours are above two K. So hopefully, this is it.
So there are a lot of, so to Mr. Robinson's question earlier, Robert Reed Number Canal Project. That project is advancing, I had an email from the engineer today. Didn't take a small break because of some issues we had with engineering firm. But that's moving forward, looking to try to have that project as a shovel-ready project. Currently, we're looking at eleven million dollar project, and we have the three point two million dollars that was set aside. You may recall, we rolled into paying reimbursement salaries under revenue option, is what they call it. The offer funds, even though we covered salaries at the beginning, took that money, salaries, and put it up and just set it aside with the stormwater fund and the capital project fund for this project. But we're looking at around eleven million, three point two is a big gap, so. Do have considerable fund balance in the stormwater fund, if I'm named from correctly.
And then offer, I mean, catch up on the offer funds. This climate right now, you're worried about that.
Well, this hour.
Yeah, it's good. And we're out from under all the reporting requirements and all of that.
That's why we move our place out, pay the salaries, making certain contribution of the capital fund, except for everything. We might have some final ramifications for most parts of town. I believe. A tentative schedule. For preliminary design to be completed. I have sixty-five percent of the preliminary design supposed to be done by March. Moving forward throughout the course of the project, there's some several reviews, town comments occur in the June-July area. And then, moving towards the final revisions in July on the project. There, we'll start looking at, get documented.
So twenty-six?
July twenty-five.
I'm saying as far as start, start of project. Yeah, going into twenty-six.
Oh, yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying, one, to actually start the project. By the time you do all this here, you're gonna be hitting twenty-six.
If it works, they own, if they have, nominations are made on how to finance or fund the remaining portion of the project. So start in March. I mean, that's.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Next, in stormwater will be the, we'll get, and just to kind of, that, basically, that's from where it now crosses down here by Fredrick School. I mean, north, up toward the school. That's the area that must be serviced. And then, some rehabilitation, things that are related along the clouds. Possibly relocation of how that flows, the water flows from downtown into the town. The burden in a different direction, assuming it's permitted, so that would help remove some washout that are happening. Because there's two, once you get west of Mill Street, there's two water supply tunnels. And go right behind that house, and go up to the church and take the water tunnel. Those areas kind of wash out where the water supply tunnels is straightened out a little bit, assuming it's permitted.
And so, C X X or whatever whoever they are, they all, they all will.
Yes, which is gonna potentially add time.
Right, unfortunately, the second, the second phase of this, this is just one phase, so the second phase would be. This area is back downtown, or anywhere, floods are around back. Well, this part should go, some more streets on, but when you talk about the flood that happens around the fire port and get it down on Main Street, middle of the main, that's why, that'll be a separate project.
So just for clarity, say, the eleven million, just the base one, what I call a base one project, or say.
And, George, during that, when you read that, what part of the data?
So what Anthony just covered in terms of downtown, from Tyson Street area back towards the school. And some of the improvements to the town itself, that's the eleven million dollar. The next phase is would be the, around the public activity building, down Main Street, et cetera, that's a different project. So I just didn't want that eleven million estimation to lead over into the, what I call the additional phases of the year round.
Did we go, did we go exactly what it would cost to do a whole project? That is, ask that question.
We had, we broke it down in phases, but first.
And the reason why I ask that is because we know that as long as you continue on the way every year, the cost, everything, all of it, is constant. Then you sit back and say, what I should have, could have, would have done, if done this. So it would just, it's a thought and idea, it would just give a unless it, a huge cost for someone to give us the estimate. Might be a cost for someone to give us the estimate, cost for the whole project.
Certainly, there will be a fault, yes, sir. And we'd have to engage the parent, that will be a separate engagement, separate in the floor.
Yeah, and there's nothing wrong with getting that, but it's only gonna hold true for so long. And keep in mind, the majority way, we're gonna pay this debt back, the stormwater fees. And so, there's only, it's gonna be a limited capacity for out, you would get on the citizen at a time.
I think, you know, you're gonna have to kind of balance too.
Right.
So there's gonna be other stormwater projects that have to go on the town. As this, the materials, the last day, they're gonna age out. There's gonna be emergency situations that we're gonna have to express, you know, while this other project is. The oil resources on the project.
I think that what I do, the phase one is serious and needs addressing, because we know what the stormwater, well, we have some idea of how bad the stormwater system is under Railroad Street. But I think as we push out, Anthony's right, there's gonna be some other large-scale stormwater need that may, or take the place of additional phases as we go forward.
Can we ask, have that question asked?
Get an estimate, I mean, we could ask them to provide us an estimate of development estimate. My problem. So, the next thing would be corrugated metal pipe replacement project. There are several pieces of this that, looking probably back in seventies, that would need to be replaced because it starts to deteriorate, rust and corrode and collapse over time. Chadman Street's gonna, it's gonna bring, there's a lot going on on Chad Street.
Yes.
So, and not only that, the sewer line may be replaced, but also the storm and grain area. And that's it for the enterprise ones.
Anthony, can I back up the sewer real quick? I'd be remiss if I didn't add for our list that there's an estimate that of about, as I stated, I believe, last week, twenty-six million dollars in capital need at CMSD plant. And I just use a very conservative forty percent. Currently, we're paying about forty percent of the cost at CMSD. And so, if you take twenty-six million and just take forty percent of that, that's ten million and four hundred thousand additional dollars of capital needs that could be responsible for in the long term. So, just because that's out of sight, and it won't have to be out of everyone's mind, and I just imagine that's it.
What about the water tower? Water tower construction. There is any way that we can do a well ourselves? Dig a well, another well?
Not the current offer present we're using now, it will be permitted by state. Like, you know, they've cut it back on using well water over the years. So we have a temporary permit right now, we can take out as much as we want. So that's not gonna last forever, so our feature is purchase of water from two.
You may recall, we did have that little gap and study. We also, it was during the time, you recall, of the capacity use rules, which required twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five percent reduction every time of the amount of water we take out of the, of the ground. We were able, fortunately thus far, to stay off the seventy-five percent reduction. We've not, we've not addressed that yet, because we've been able to get this temporary permitting process to stay at fifty percent. So, you never know, with that temporary system goes away, then we would have to make that additional production. And so, an additional wells wasn't feasible. To meet our need, basically, is the future, is then purchasing water. We're gonna need that additional tower to help with pressures and everything else. Water bank.
But that would be within the next five years, every year, for the next power, looking at.
First, first there was water line. Looking at. Location, specific location.
But again, I just remind everybody on these enterprise funds, well, and even the general fund projects, major sources of revenue are your taxes, and they have to be great in terms of how.
I will say too, I can speak a little bit more, but you know, it's apparent that we did this loop and project. We got following this all throughout the system. It's not like we got, we're gonna, it's not like we're necessarily gonna be able to choose which one we do. It's about how we schedule the timing. About how we schedule the timing and. Most likely, they're gonna have to be done on board together, so that may be a little bit painful, um, in terms of. At the rates, um, but these projects have to be done.
Do we have a figure on the looping project?
So, uh, off the top of my head, I wanna say we applied for a little over two million dollars, um, and that was, uh. I would say about eighty percent of the loops that needed to be done.
This was clean water?
We tried to scale that so that it wasn't. As in I can hear what you're saying. I said that was about eighty percent of the loops that needed to be completed, what we submitted to, um, D E Q. And so, so in that grant application, uh, I believe it covered about eighty percent of the connections or loops that needed to be made. Um, or replaced, so that we have better work quality and load pressure.
In town or, or over town, or in a certain area?
Uh, it'll change based on the area, but. Because of where our bottom line source and places that could have effects throughout the system. Some of these really depend on where you're all. You were asking me something.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
So I think you can tell that we've got a pretty substantial list, um, and even really. The mayor and I were just discussing whether or not the council was ready or interested to see if we want to do any kind of prioritization. It's challenging because. There's so many of these that are absolutely and quickly needed, and a lot of the. Design, funding, applications that need to be prepared. Uh, documents that need to be prepared, so that we can turn around and apply for the funding. They'll need to be done, so I'm happy, work with you all tonight, if you are so inclined. Try to prioritize or. Take these as they come about, um, I'm hoping.
Yeah, and that's what I wanna know from you, I mean, do you, you want her to send us a list of what we're talking about? And let us kind of go through them and. And prioritize and then we bring it, but, you know, send it back to her. You know, let everybody look at them, see how you can rank them.
It's a lot to digest, I realize.
What I'm saying, each, the council look at them, see if, and then we look at how y'all rank, what y'all see, that's their priorities. Would that, do that kind of make sense?
Yeah, I think we feel pretty confident what we heard last week in terms of the projects for two-year timeframe, one and three, in a two-year timeframe. These longer projects are projects that have a longer timeframe associated with them. I realize that we probably lose processing and additional thought, and I'm happy to deal with it.
Lily, I do, I'm sorry, I do have one question. Was there not a study done that was going to help us prioritize some of these things, like professionally, like?
So, yes, we have, um, oh. Stormwater A and the, um, regional pump station, uh, project. And both of those, when they're included, give us prioritization based on what they're lining for. Um, as well as, we have a, a, a war C I P that's been adopted. But again. Based on, on the funding, how that plays out, so. I mean, I think ultimately, we can, ob- obviously always prioritize things and then revisit it once those are, are available. Or maybe wait till they're available, I think that's kind of a pleasure for the project.
I think, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, what is the timeframe for the availability of the evacuation?
I feel like most of them, I think both of them would be done around June.
And what I was gonna say, we still, we could do it now, but if they come, we can then change it, I mean, it's, it could be a work in place. That's correct.
It could, it may be, um, don't have the parts of rep plant yet, so just a notation on that. You will only be receiving the, uh, comprehensive plan presentation this month. I think Dr. Hurrell, Councilman Dr. Hurrell will, um, not be with us this month, and the mayor will not be with us next month. So the site-specific master plan that deals more predominantly with multi-purpose facility site. We decided to bring that back in April, so that everybody hopefully will be present and. You all can hear that, uh, presentation. So, those plans will then kind of help us formulate the plan for moving forward on the multi-purpose facility. Now, Anthony's got several documents in the hopper on a lot of these enterprise fund projects that may help us, um, prioritize. And. I know the chief, the chief of the fire department will be working on a new master plan, theirs is terribly outdated. That may help with their needs in terms of substations and training ground, et cetera. So. Now that we're having this conversation, it may be pertinent to post-prioritization. Will these things be put together and then maybe have. We'll always have another planning session, we're not just, you know, we're not, uh, limited to the number of those we can have. Sometimes I think having that, uh, patient would help us. A lot, in the meantime, we can work on the, on the projects that we've mentioned for the two-year timeframe. And I know staff's already walking on. Uh, reaching out. How is it being in the various projects to get information, so we can follow up there and all those, that's just a recommendation.
So, what about the, the budget steps that we need to take before June? Uh, and us speaking of prioritizing the things that we might have future stand. Would that involve into the budget plan for this year?
I think that some of the shorter term projects could have a budgetary impact, probably will have a budgetary impact. And I think we will certainly work through those during the budget process. But that's why I, I think I'm comfortable with what I heard you all discuss last week on the shorter term projects.
And I think, yeah, as far as, I agree with you, but I think as far as the budget's concerned, the shorter term projects, I think we can look at incorporated.
Some of those.
Some, you know, some of those in town, and I took the budget, you know.
Pieces and parts of those.
The longer term, I think, and, um, whatever, I agree with what you said. But, uh, as far as, uh, council, do y'all agree with that, making sure that we got out everything, then look at it at that standpoint.
I do, I think more input that we can get from, the more input that we do, the better.
I do also think with some of these capital, uh, improvement plans, get some estimations on what some of these projects are anticipated to cost. Pause at that point in time, so it may be some more holistic. Or the gravity of, of the cost of them. Again, I'm happy to do whatever it helps, I think, that's happy to do.
So, um, just for clarity, the, uh, prioritization, I know it's four years, one to three, that's what you're gonna send us, is that right?
I'm actually gonna send you, um, all of what we've discussed, both things, and I'll break it out with the, we used the two-year timeframe. I'll use both in the list I sent you, but I'll, uh, send you basically what was listed under last week's timeframe and.
But the five to seven, we're gonna, I'll just kind of hold off on that until we get the supporting document.
That was my recommendation.
And that's what I was asking, asking council, wouldn't, you know, if y'all do that, and we can come back, as she said, have a go. And discuss once we get all that information, we can just, you know, discuss that, see how.
Because what may come out of some of those are some projects we haven't discussed yet. There are some needs we haven't discussed yet, uh, so definitely don't want to miss anything.
But in the meantime, the shorter term, we'll be able to see.
Yes, I think, I think we can definitely, you know what you're going in that short term.
You know, I just wanted to make sure that with the shortest timeframe that we're speaking of is one to two years, right, one to three years?
Last week we used two years, tonight it's one to three, but yes, and that one.
Oh, one to two, I like one to two, I mean, because, I mean, I, I like one to two.
Well, I like two, I really.
Yes.
I mean, there'll be some things we can obviously achieve in one. But it gives us a, a good window, I think.
And, and I like to, I like to say this also, I think in our last meeting that we had, you know, we, we. Talked about multi-purpose building. And I, 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 in my thinking. That we was. Um, working towards. As that project being one of the top priorities already, being, has been discussed for, for a long time. And, um. And tonight, I'm here in five to seven. So, um.
I don't think it's a lack of priority, I think we're clear that, that that's a high priority, it's just unrealistic. To think that that could be accomplished, built and finished in a two-year timeframe. Right, so, we've got to determine, let's just say it's, let's just round off twenty million dollars. We're gonna apply for parts where I creation trust fund monies, but that would be a five hundred thousand dollar max, that's a matching. We gotta figure out how we're gonna finance the rest. That's just to get the facility. Built, the whole, uh, property developed. Then we have to figure out what stacker's gonna be demanded. So. I think. Just with other building projects, that building projects, utility projects. I think it would be a real challenge, plus. How we wanna recruit the debt service on a twenty million dollar, or any of these projects that are multi-million dollar projects. And the effective tax rate for the citizens.
So, I estimate has been. You ever seen an estimate of what the cost to build a multi-purpose building is, twenty million?
That's just, that's just a very, because it's not designed, so there's no way to have a, a real estimate, but I mean, I think. If I can jump in, if I, uh, mistake anything, but. I think that's a number, a realistic number we can work with.
Even, one question, even if we do it in phases. Or we are speaking of twenty million, is everything that we would like to have on it, on that facility?
Um. I think. Uh. So with the number, I mean, right now, we don't know the total cost, but we just, depending on the site specific, that's not just the multi-purpose building itself. That's also, um, your multi-purpose fields, pickleball courts, so we won't know until after the site specific plan is actually done. Um, and that's with McGill, they'll actually be coming to talk with us.
And I was just, so I was gonna say, um. I, I was sharing a video this evening across people, they just build a, uh, a store. And it's, uh, seventy-seven, seventy-seven thousand square foot building. And they came in around twenty million, that's just the building, not talking about nothing outside. Twenty-two, twenty-two million, twenty-two million, twenty-two million, uh, and that ain't talking about outside. It's just the building, so you talking about, they've been, they've planned this over the years, finally got to it now. Got built, but costs. Yeah, um, he's, he told me, uh, said they had, um, elevated track, and they dedicated twenty-two thousand square foot to an adult wing. And, and the adult wing, they got two racquetball courts, a, uh, teaching kitchen and five eating areas. Yeah, and that's, that's coming in at twenty-two million, and so you talking about. We go build it now, there's gonna be some mad people in London because of taxes, but enough.
But we.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Okay, the other thing that I want you, for us to remember, when we just talked about all these very necessary. Infrastructure items that are tens and tens of thousands of dollars, um, the Noble Canal, the Chapman Street, which has already had several issues. If we build in that area and we don't have the looping, the flow, the infrastructure, I mean, we have to address that as well, and we're talking. I mean, I, I lost count, to be honest, tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure that we have to juggle along with this. So that, that also has to be considered, I, I don't think it would be a feasible thing to happen in a two to three year plan, to be quite honest. And be able to meet the needs of the building, infrastructure wise, staffing wise, and et cetera.
Um, I had a question, and just to kind of echo what, uh, Councilwoman Smith said about the foundation, the, we had the soil testing, I don't know if we. Even kind of went, you know, after that, what was, you know, the, the progress of the results of that, and, you know, where we're building, is that a place that. You know, the, the land area or the infrastructure and the looping, is, is that a place where all of that needs to happen first? And then we build, um, the multi-purpose building, because, I mean, most construction or commercial buildings, I think it would take around two years to build it up. But if we're talking about, um, funding, then, you know, there was, if I'm not mistaken, when I first came on, um, maybe two years ago or so. There was allocation for the multi-purpose building, also we worked on a design, so there should be a design or some type of blueprint or something. Somewhere, because we were asked about what we wanted, what we wanted to see, you know, stages, I mean, just all those things, so, you know, I'm just curious to, where's that information? Where do we have that?
So the information on the site-specific master plan that we hired McGill to put in place, that will be presented in April. So, there really, we talked about sort of a site idea, but there's no design of the building. There are two concepts, as I, the concepts, as I understand it, will be presented in April, um, but then. Council will need to jump in with input from the public to determine what is actually contained in the building and what's actually contained on the property. Then after that. Turn somebody to just design the building, in the meantime, we start to figure out how we're gonna fund it, and then go there.
And like you and, uh, Councilwoman Smith said, Paul, said, we need to sure, uh, as we was listening, Chapman Street is having a lot of stuff going on. On Chapman Street, that we need to sure Chapman Street first, before we, I think we can think about building anything over there. You know, you know, all these stormwater projects and. Sewer projects, you know.
Looping.
And loopings, right, yeah, we got, we got a ton of stuff before, I think we need to put something in the ground before it fall down.
I think that.
I don't need that like that, but.
Well, I think because of the pieces and parts that will be required on the multi-purpose facility, we can work all along. Parallel to finishing some of these utility projects we're talking about, uh, I just wanted to. Kind of answer one question about, uh, it, it's not that it lacks priority because it's gonna take a little longer time to get it done. I think we're very clear that it's a council priority. I just wanted to have a, a little more, um. Specific conversation about expectations, I think.
Well, I think it's moving along.
Yes.
Like, I mean, like it should, I mean, because we gotta get the plan in, in April.
Yes, you need to have these things in order to have a funding.
Right, and then I think as, I can get you up, but then I think as a council, I think we need to then, um, get together and look at. Uh, the site that I was just talking about, and then we need to look at the one and the new, and then we can probably. And then we need to look at the one and the new, and then we can probably arrange that we can go look at these sites. And then we can look at and see how they staff these sites. You know, because these are a lot of questions that we don't know, that we're gonna have to look at. So that's why I was saying earlier, the five, the five to seven, it may come in, that it can be done early if we can find money. What I talked about earlier, partnerships, and that we can find money, you know, to help with these things. But we got to start turning over these rocks, but we got, you know, slowly turn them over, because we do have other projects. You know, that's somewhere where we can start at, where we can go and visit these, these sites.
And we can set up the, I call it a field trip, if council is interested in, they can quay break that in. Two facilities that are just open and, so.
What about the one north of the river?
There, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna look at sites, I, I, I.
Yeah.
Because I look at the one over there every time I go over there. But if you're gonna look at what you're proposing as a multi-purpose, I think you want to look at. Euclid and Newton.
Okay.
The one across the river is just basically a gym, or you can go around Alice King, it's the same model.
Okay.
You know, over there, but, I mean, we can look at it, but if you, if we're gonna build something, I really feel like we should build something like the O2 Center.
And.
Here, did you saw it?
The way I'm understanding, even though these are five to seven-year projects, it does not mean that during that one to three-year period. That we won't be taking steps toward fulfilling these projects.
And we're already taking steps on a lot of these projects. But I think we wanted to, to, and I thank you for bringing that up because it's important. A lot of these projects are multi-year in the making. It takes, for you five years on a lot of the utility projects at the earliest to, you know. Uh, design, figure out what you want to do, figure out how you're gonna pay for it. And then, and then actually bring it to fruition. So yes, I mean, I think the idea is that we will work all along because these projects aren't gonna happen tomorrow.
Just remind everybody we will have the overall roof walk, it's not our project, but we'll have that. We'll be heavily involved in that as well in these couple of years too. So that's, that's not gonna be a, 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 a five-month turnaround project, I mean, that's a, that's a long, long project.
And then there will be costs associated with some of that utility relocation that we didn't discuss tonight, so.
And they are still saying twenty-six, which is about the time that our Noble Canal railroad project could potentially get, so we could have a whole lot of stuff happening.
I'll be interested, I saw where there's a lot of money gonna go west, so I don't know if that ends up affecting. Okay, I'll talk about it after, you know, or not, but. It, it makes me wonder if that project will be delayed, I don't, I don't know.
The last we heard, that everything was still on schedule, last, the last week, as we heard, as we heard.
I did hear the governor's office, and I don't know if anybody else heard it, but I think places a billion dollars to put it on, so. I don't know whether that affects projects in the eastern.
Well, um. Council, I'm gonna start with Ms. Robinson. Do you have any?
I think that we're doing something good as far as setting priorities for our board and those things that we, you know, just like I said, the question I asked. We'll be working toward the five-year projects during that one to three-year period. So I just, like, for us, I keep that in mind as we do things, take our steps and think, think about the things that our, our citizens need and our community needs.
Uh, Mr. Roy. Yes, I, I like to say that, you know, it's on water. Projects that was presented to us tonight, there are some of the things that we have been talking about. And especially the canal. It has been repeated a couple of times. I don't want to say how many times that is. And in the chapter, we finally got a handle on that and we headed in the right direction on that project. I just wanted to say thank you. Now, and us to have that vision to, uh. Have that project where it's there today and hopefully a completion. Uh, we, I think we brought up also that, um, Tarow project, I just figured over that. I think there are some things that we have to get ready for just in case. That the plans stay on. Stay on the date that they said they were gonna start on. I think we're seeing like March of twenty-six, hopefully, that's the last I've heard. So I wanted to see, to make sure that we have begun to do the things that we need to do. To, to our part for that project.
So I was contacted by NCPT last week, was told that there was only two properties left to acquire. And the property acquisition process is what's been, aside from the funding, but once they got re-refunded. Or it was put back in to get funding, uh, the, that property acquisition process was, is much different than what a town has to go. Obtain property for a project. And so last update as of last week is they only have two properties left to acquire.
What about us helping move in our lines and?
Oh, absolutely. I would go ahead and, we already got plans already in place for that. All, all the utility relocations have been engineered and. Um, we'll be bringing before you all some agreements from NCPT, uh, probably at your March meeting. But, uh, some decisions to be made in such February, I mean, in regard to some cosmetic-type things that go along with the project.
Okay.
We'll have those conversations on Monday night. But as far as utilities go, all that's been engineered. In fact, that's why they called to say, look, we've got two properties left, we might as well start looking at. Stuff out the field so that we can get the lines relocated.
And that's what I was thinking about, and that's including the sewer system too.
There is some sewer in the area, um, there are water in the area, they covered the stormwater improvements. Plus, those betterments that were requested out of town, um, there are betterments requested on the water side. Or to. Pass the area so that we don't have to go back in there and do work after they. The town will have to cover the cost of that, those betterments. What I mean by betterment, if they only need a six, line we ask for, ten minutes line, they're gonna have to pay their, folks.
And that's a good time to go ahead and take care of something like that anyway.
Yes.
Overall, I think we had a good meeting, nice to, first meeting, this, the meal was great. And I think that the vision that we have for it to town and I think our citizens, we proud of the management. And the, um, the council, um, coming together and speaking on every act. Thank you.
I just wanted to say.
Um, I would just say that I am, I'm grateful to be able to serve the wonderful community. I'm very thankful for all of the staff that we have. I appreciate your expertise, your wisdom, your, your guidance. Y'all are a huge part of what makes us successful. It is recognized and is, and we thank you very much for it.
Dr. Harrell.
I just want to say thanks to the staff as always, our council. I would just want to see execution, I want to see us put these conversations into action. Again, we know the why, we know the what, but we need to make sure that we're planning strategically for the how. Thanks.
Okay, all right. And again, thank everyone. I think last two meetings that we had, uh. We accomplished a lot and I think we got the map that we need. And we just, as she just said, we just need to execute. That's from even from the staff to the council. As I said, we, we are in this together. Because we were gonna, with that being said.
I do want to make a note, I, I think we should have a adjournment here, is that what it says? Okay, I just noticed that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could I get an adjourned?
I'm moving that we adjourn.
Second.
Have a, a motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Smith, second by Dr. Harrell, all in favor? All opposed?